And welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Colin and Julie from our team with us as always. Hey guys.
Hello.
How you doing everyone?
Excited to have you here today. We're going to be talking about easy ways to share young living. Now, this is for you if you are busy, if young living is not your main thing. So maybe you have another business and sharing young living is a part of what you do, but not all of what you do. Or maybe you're new to young living, sharing might seem a little intimidating. Or maybe you just don't feel like a marketer or an influencer, or like some of these other people that you've seen that seem to be doing really well with sharing young living. And you're looking for ways to get more comfortable so that you can feel good about how you're growing and sharing on a regular basis, right? So if you aren't sharing enough and you feel like some of these reasons are why, today's call is for you. And I hope that of course, if you're here today, that you get a lot out of this. But if you find that there's someone on your team, for instance, maybe someone that has expressed an interest in sharing, but who maybe is not for potentially some of these reasons, maybe you share this recording with them. This will be up on our YouTube channel after we're live. So as always, we are live every Thursday at noon US Eastern time. This is a call that is open to everyone who loves young living, that has an interest in sharing. And of course, we with Get Oiling have all of the tools that you need to support you from day one all the way to Royal Crown Diamond. So we're going to get into some slides today. And then from there, we are going to take a look at our system and different tools and features that you can use. And of course, if you are here looking for one-on-one help today, there's an opportunity to get that here as well. So we're going to pop out a video and get into these slides and get this show on the road. As you're coming in, let us know where in the world you are. We're always looking forward to, to meeting new people and of course, seeing all of these awesome familiar faces that we do on these weekly calls. So today, we're going to talk about easy ways to share young living. And this is for you, if you are a busy person, if you're new to young living, and especially if you just don't really feel that strong as a marketer, right? You don't want to embody that. It's not really who you are. Today, we're going to talk about ways that you can promote young living without coming across to the world that you are a part of as a promoter, right? So today, we're going to talk about how you can create opportunities all the time, doing things you're already doing. We'll talk about how we can leverage other people's expertise so that you don't have to carry the burden of knowing everything about everything. And we'll talk about the no friction conversation flow that will allow you, again, showing up exactly as you are in the world that you show up in today to create more opportunity and to move that opportunity toward successful sharing that feels comfortable for all parties. And then of course, as always, we'll get into live help and Q and A. So if you are here today, you have questions, maybe your questions are about this topic, maybe they're about something else. I want to encourage you to add this to the Q and A here on the live call. And if you're watching this as a replay, I want to invite you to come and join us sometime on a Thursday. Like I said before, it's noon Eastern US time. We do of course have recordings, but we do love to see you here live. That's get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. If you'd like to work together on a call like this one, we reserve the second half of these calls. The first half is housekeeping and training. The second half is dedicated to working with you one-on-one. So I want to encourage you, if there's something that you would like to have some hands-on help with, you can go to get oiling.com/website review and take advantage of the second half of a call, just like this one, where we can work on whatever you'd like to work on together. And if you would like even more assistance, you'd like for somebody to maybe create a website for you, you know, set things up in your system as you've maybe learned about on a call like these. You can go to get oiling.com/conceivers to learn about our awesome team and how they can help you and request a quote. Now head over into the chat and let me know the answer to these questions. Do you share young living as often as you'd like to? How many of us actually feel like we are sharing enough, right? Based on what our goals are, based on what our beliefs are, our experience? Do we feel like this is something that we want, that we're not doing enough of? And I'm really curious to know, and feel free, this is a safe space here, share it in the comments. What do you feel stands in the way of you sharing and living? Now, for some reason Zoom isn't letting me pull my chat up and I really want to see what you guys are saying. So bear with me with the view here for just a second, so I can get reoriented. Perfect. Alright, so there we go. Alright, so tell me, what is it that keeps you from sharing? Insecurity, yes. Tell me more about that. What do you feel insecure about where it comes to sharing young living? Carrie says, I want it to be perfect. Don't want to seem salesy. Yes. And that perfection, that is like Cheryl's hitting on something here with insecurity, right? We want things to be just so. We're worried about sounding salesy. Ooh, wanting it to be transformational. Okay. Don't want to drive people away by sharing too often. Yes. Okay, so I think that there's, there's a common thread here, right? Yes, how it comes across. It's possible that, afraid I'll word vomit. Keep them coming, you guys here in the chat. Thank you. Yeah, so when we think about what keeps us from sharing, I think that the majority of the time, it is some kind of insecurity. It is worrying how someone else will see us, how they'll think of us, right? And, and the really important thing to know is that you actually have control over those things. And if you go about sharing and approaching opportunities to share the right way, then it can feel really natural, both to you and really importantly, to the person that you want to share with, right? So let's talk about this. First, let's talk about how we can share more frequently. First, we're going to learn how to create more sharing opportunities. That's doing what we're already doing. And then we're going to talk about how we can get into the habit of pointing instead of creating. Now, you can create a lot with Get Oiling and I want to encourage you to do a lot of that. But where it comes to sharing young living, there is a formula that works and it's worked in this company since this company's inception. And it's worked for every successful reputable network marketing business since the beginning of time. Pointing, we're going to talk about this a bit here today. And this is especially going to be important for those of you who have busy lives or have a primary career, business or job that, that takes your full focus, but young living is more of a thing you do on the side. And then we'll talk about what conversation triggers look like and then your next steps from there. And if that's unclear, don't worry, we're going to get into all of these. So first, let's talk about creating more sharing opportunities. Now, one of the things that I want to go ahead and point out here is that absolutely none of what I am condoning today involves you going out there, taking pictures of product and posting it all over your social. That is not something that invites conversation. That is something that tells the world that you have something to promote. Now, if that's how you prefer to, to operate, right? If you are a social seller, then more power to you. I think we're probably talking to folks here today who are not Instagram influencers. Am I right? If you raise your hand and let me know, I am not that kind of influencer, right? So this is for you. So to create more sharing opportunities, what we're doing is creating more opportunities in ways that we're already showing up in our own life. I'm not going to ask you to go fashion yourself into an influencer and go operate like the social sellers do on social media. Again, no shade to the social sellers. If you're doing that and it's working for you and your organization is retaining and duplicating, good, keep it up, right? But that's not most of us, because it's not sustainable. For everybody, if everybody who was a young living brand partner went out there and did the social selling bit, where everything you did online was a young living thing, everybody would get tired of hearing about young living and nobody would want to buy it, right? So it is important to think about that young living as being the sort of treasure that you have in your back pocket, right? That you have the ability to bestow upon people when the time is right, when they are right to hear it, right? So what I want you to do first is think about where you're already showing up. Okay, so where are you socializing? And feel free, put this in the chat. I think that you could absolutely benefit the community here by sharing some of what your experience is and maybe even providing some ideas. So where are you showing up socially? And I mean you as a human, not you as a network marketer or you as a brand partner, where are you showing up? Do you have your own office in the community because you are a practitioner of some kind? Do you go to a house of worship, excuse me, on a regular basis? Are you a part of any clubs, organizations? First, let's think about your, your in-person IRL stuff, right? Jolene is a busy person, karate dojo, library, personal office. Thank you for sharing that. Awesome. So where are you already showing up? First, think about where you're showing up. Second thing, you got to understand that as a young living brand partner, even if you're part-time, you are the product. Oils, not the product. Ningxia, not the product. You are the product, the proof of you being the product. The proof that the product works is you, right? We all understand that, right? We're not selling Ningxia. We're selling, I have so much more energy now. And you want more energy too, right? You are the product. So think about everywhere you're going already, where you're already spending your time. Make sure that you're showing up as the best version of your product. You are your product. Now granted, that doesn't mean that you're never going to actually talk about young living products. So AJ just said, she shared last night at a historical society meeting, that's super cool. A friend had a heartburn, enter Diagei's. Voila. I actually, that happened to me at a party a couple of years ago too. One of my husband's friends was like, oh, I got this heartburn. And I was like, here, rub this on your belly. And he was like, you're, you're serious? And I was like, yes buddy, rub this on your belly. And he came back to me later and he was like, hey, that stuff worked. Can I have some more, right? And, and the reason why somebody would say, yeah, I'll try that is because they know that I know something, because I've got things that are going right for me, right? So you need to show up as the best version of you is, is really the best way to put this, okay? Be the best, the best version of you and the version of you that is proof that young living works. This doesn't mean you wear young living paraphernalia, right? It means that you are that product. And then you want to, in these places where you're already showing up, get in the habit of making better connections with people around you. Right? Oh, Allison says, I get to know my Whole Foods, the produce guys, the cheese girls, the butcher, the tellers at the bank. Yes, yes. Be the person who makes someone smile today, right? If you go out into the world, if you don't normally do this, and listen, I am someone who lives in New York City and people don't just talk to each other. I grew up in Alabama where people just talk to each other, right? So be the person who does that. One of my best friends is an ER doctor and I don't understand how she has the level of energy she does. PS, she uses Ningxia. So maybe I do understand. But she is always communicating. If we, if we're talking to somebody, she's learning their life story. If, if, if we are at a restaurant, the bartender is going to wind up giving her their life story. If we are at a concert, we are going to have phone numbers and brand new friends of the people who are all around us. Now, I'm not saying that you have to be that person 100% of the time, but I am encouraging you to be just a little bit more like my friend, right? Or like Allison here, who is, is actually taking, you know, taking time out of her regular grocery visit to know the butcher's name. And then eventually you find out butcher has college kids, just like she does, right? She knows her banker is a newlywed. His name is Kyle. That's awesome, right? So get to know people. These are humans around you. Now, you're showing up at these places already. These things that we're talking about so far, they don't have a direct connection to putting product in someone's hand the majority of the time, but that's okay. What we're doing is we are seeding opportunities. And we're also adding value to others' lives while adding value to our own. Allison, before you started trying to get to know the people at your Whole Foods, did you enjoy going to the grocery store? Was it, was it anywhere near as enjoyable? Right? It wasn't, right? You are building relationships. You are participating in community in a way that we don't anymore. I think in a broad sense, since the advent of, of, of personal cell phones and social media networks. We don't know our neighbors. We don't know our people in our communities. Be somebody who does something differently to that end, okay? And if you are on social media, right? If you work from home, like I have for over a decade, social media may be a, a really important place for you to become a little bit more active so that you can connect with and make more friends, right? So if you're on social with your existing network, start sharing tips, insights, inspiration related to the outcomes that you've realized with young living, remembering that you are the product, right? So we're not talking about Ningxia and we're not talking about the 14-day reset in our posts necessarily, right? But what we are doing is that we are understanding that you know what, when I go to the grocery store today, there are going to be people who recognize me because they go there every week. But they're going to see that I have a little pep in my step. They're going to see that I have some more energy, that I'm smiling, that my skin is clearer. I feel better in my body. And those people are going to recognize that something's different about me. Now, when I start having conversations with those people, they're going to be a lot more interested in hearing from me if I say, you know, hey, would you like to try something? After they've shared with me that there is something that they're, they're struggling with, where their wellness is concerned, right? So you are the product, right? Remember that the product placement that you are participating in, in your daily life and on social media is you. So if you've gotten better energy and you feel better every day, then maybe you start dropping some tips. You could say, hey, you know what, I've been on this journey to lose a little bit of weight and feel a little better in my body. And I've realized that intermittent fasting has been so helpful for me. I'm not an expert on this, but I'd love to hear from you if you've tried it before. And like, let's start a conversation about this. That's an example of something that you can do. And PS, if people start engaging in that conversation, you could take that conversation over to the DMs and get them into the 14-day reset because there's absolutely information about that kind of stuff in there, right? So you can say, I'm not the expert, but here I got this resource. All you got to do is use this stuff that gives me energy every day. Wouldn't that be cool? Alright, so here's why this works. First, you aren't doing anything drastically different. The number one reason why we aren't sharing as much as we could or as much as we want to is because we've got this 10,000-foot tall brick wall in front of us that is our insecurity. And that insecurity starts by doing something that's different. It's doing something that's outside of our comfort zone. All you have to do is show up, smile and talk to more people when you go out into the world. So instead of nodding at somebody, if you make eye contact with them, tell them good morning, give them a compliment if you want to go next level with it. And maybe if you want to go another level beyond that, start asking them questions to, to show that you are interested in a conversation, right? So remember, you aren't doing anything drastically different. You're showing up in the exact same place as you did before. You're just showing up better as a better you, because young living makes you a better you, doesn't it? Give me a yes in the chat. Alright, people will also, this is another reason why this works, and I mentioned this in the previous slide. People will notice those positive shifts in you. The people who see you on a regular basis, they see you not slouching anymore. They see you lost a little weight. They see you're glowing. They see your hair looks awesome. They, they, they see your energy. They feel your energy. They, they experience your vibrance. You know why this is happening for you. They don't necessarily know why yet, but people will notice. And the people who are noticing, who want something like that, they're just going to come out and ask you, hey, what are you doing? Something's different about you. Has anybody had that happen to them before? Have you ever had anybody just show up and be like, hey, what, what are you doing? Because it's working, right? That is somebody saying, please tell me what to buy, right? And you want to create opportunities for things like that to happen. And all you literally have to do is use your product and go out into the world, understanding that you are representation, that your product works. So that observation, that something cool is happening with you, that creates curiosity and openness from others who could be people that you share with. And those people will start asking you, or if you get into conversations with them, they will open up more readily because they saw a shift. They saw that, you know, you were maybe grumpy or drowsy or whatever that thing was. And now they see some kind of positive shift. And if they're open to that same positive shift, they're going to be very open to whatever it is that you are going to recommend them. Now, this is going to be a really important thing for everyone to remember here, especially if you find that you spend a lot of your time creating things and not sharing. I want you to get into the habit of pointing. That means the information doesn't come from you. You are showing where people can get it, alright? Pointing. So you of course, need to be the proof of what you're doing and using works. That's the, the number one, first and most important thing, because you don't need to point to yourself for people to see. If you're going to talk about, you know, having more energy, feeling better, doing this or that, like if you are living, breathing, physical proof that you know what you're talking about, you don't have to point to anything, right? That, that already places you at a level where people are going to listen. But I want you to remember phrases like this. All I know is, or this person or this video explains it best. Right? All I know is this, my story. You want to know more about that thing? Here's a video that explains it better than I can. Even if you know it, it is better for you to point to another person or to a resource and edify it. So that that person that you're sharing with or who is curious or interested, whatever, they are going to receive that information in a way that is more effective than if you were to try yourself to share that same information, right? So if they want to know, well, I mean, why is young living different from, you know, another company or, you know, getting oils on Amazon, et cetera? You could, and, and maybe you are very good at explaining this. It is still more effective for you to point to Young Living's own video or to someone else in the company who has done a really great job, someone who's in your upline, you know, a leader, a figurehead in the company who is explaining this concept. And the reason why this pointing is important is because you want to engage in this third-party validation, right? Also, being a know-it-all doesn't duplicate. If you do care about growing this business, you really want to make sure that you aren't getting your people stuck in the idea that they need to make everything themselves, create everything themselves and basically create a new career becoming a graphic designer and, and email marketer in order to grow young living, because it's just not true. You don't have to do that, right? But if you have a whole team of people who are too focused on creating social media posts, you know, explaining young living products, then they are sharing. You're going to have a team that doesn't grow, right? Now, another important pointing habit you can develop is pointing to testimonials, right? Get to know some testimonial resources. Do you guys have any favorites? Let us know in the chat. I know oil-testimonials.com is an old school one that you could use lots of, of great, you know, type it in. The 14-day reset, yes, obviously, and that's free. Yes. The 14-day reset has not only great written testimonials, but there are pictures, like there's picture proof, right? You could say, hey, look at my, at my friend over here, look at her results. Yeah, let's go get those results together. I love it. Yeah, so also, and, and thank you for mentioning that Allison, the 14-day reset. Take advantage of existing momentum. Right now, as this is being filmed, as we sit here today, the 14-day reset is an absolute avalanche of activity. And 100% something you should be plugging into, and I mean plugging into the big groups, right? Getting into the Facebook group, getting your, your leads and friends into the Facebook group, getting into the private vault, if your folks are non-Facebook people, right? Incredible opportunity here to take advantage of existing momentum. You don't have to create that energy yourself. It's impossible for you to, because you need thousands of people to create that kind of momentum and it's happening right now. So take advantage of that. So join and invite your friends to that 14-day reset. And then finally, lean on your team. Lean on your team. What does this mean? This means use three-way conversations, right? We used to call these three-way calls before Zoom existed. So use three-way conversations, meaning you don't have to be the expert, but you can plan, if you're going to sit down and share young living with somebody, you can plan to call a friend, right? Or have them join a Zoom call with you, or have them show up with you in person, or take them over to their house, et cetera, right? Where you can share social proof and expertise. Now, this works because this pointing, right, is a humbling activity. Pointing means, look, you and me, we're in the same boat. I've just got results that you don't. This doesn't make me the expert. I'm not on a level higher than you. All I know is, I got this result because I took this thing over here and I'm really excited about what the future looks like. Do you want to, you, you want to do this too, right? You're in this with them. And people feel much more comfortable with a peer than they do being, you know, essentially talked down to from someone who is coming from a different level than them. So pointing humbles you, which is really important in how you connect with people, build trust. And then of course, you know, have them see that they could do this the same way you do. And let's think about this for a second. If you wanted to talk to people about awesome shoes that you have, that, you know, have all these great qualities, or maybe you get your blankets from somewhere, your sheets from some kind of organic cotton company or something like that, you don't need to know everything about the cotton growing process and the weaving process and, and the labor sourcing guidelines to be able to tell people that you bought great sheets, right? You don't need to know everything about everything with oils and young living products to be able to be super successful in getting people to give them a shot. Matter of fact, it's better for you to not know a whole lot at all, because you can say, all I know is, and then edify the information you're pointing to. And that is a far more duplicable activity for the group, growth of your business in the future. And again, it creates that level playing field where you're in it together with your people. And that's social proof, getting that third person on the call, pointing to that video that someone else who loves young living made. That stuff sells more than you saying the thing yourself. So needing to point to, like having that be a function of how you share. I know I'm going to need to call in a resource. I know I'm going to need to call in a friend. Needing to do that means leaning on your team. It means that you can put social proof to use every time you share. How many of you can say that you put social proof to use every time you share? Or is it just between you and the person you're sharing with? If you leave out that third party, you are missing a vital piece of the puzzle, right? We need a four-legged table here, right? And one of those is you, one of them is the person you're sharing with, one of them is young living. We got a tripod here, make it more stable as a table. Add that third-party validation, right? This could be your upline, a sideline, a friend. It doesn't matter. It needs to be somebody else who loves young living, who is able to connect as well with the person that you're sharing with. And again, being the brainiac, it's not duplicable. Alright, last piece here, conversation triggers and next steps. The easiest way to share young living, of course, is to have conversations with people in situations that you're already in, in your daily, regular life. It's talking to your butcher. It's talking to your banker. It's catching up with your friend. It's making new friends, right? It's, it's being a more sociable person and getting more conversations in to your social diet, right? So how do we make the most of this? We want to ask great questions and learn more about people. That's it. Allison, again, great, great example. Saying hello to the butcher, learning the butcher's name. Now she knows that, that the butcher has a college-age kid just like she does. And maybe more information comes out next time. And because they see that she's always so bubbly and full of energy, they ask, hey, so what do you do? And then she can say, oh, I, I help, you know, I help parents to discover more energy so they can get all their things done. And they're like, well, I could use some more energy. And she then sets up a time to sit down and talk with them about how she can help them improve their energy. And the easiest way that she could do that is to invite them in to the 14-day reset. You're getting them their, you're getting them their, their Ningxia right there out of the gate, getting them hooked on a fantastic product and you're off to the races, right? All this starts with asking more questions. So if you're new, right? If you are super introverted, this begins first with making eye contact. Then the next level is saying hello. The next level from there is maybe paying a compliment. The next level from there, after the compliment, is to ask a thoughtful question to start a conversation, right? Then, as you're in conversations with people, and this does take time to develop, you don't always just dive straight into the opportunity to serve and share. You want to listen for where, where those openings are, right? When people are talking with you, the more trust there is, the When people are talking with you, the more trust there is, the more likely it is that they're gonna open up and say something that makes your spidey senses, your oily spidey senses tingle, and you go, oh, my God, there's an oil for that. There is a way that I can help this person. So you want to listen for those openings, right? And it's usually going to start with, I wish, right? I wish that I, right? Or, um, if only, right? People are saying that there are things that they wish were different. And they are struggling to get those figured out, or they feel powerless, or, um, you know, or or on the positive side, they are saying that they have a goal, and you can ask them more about what they're doing to reach it, right? Look for those openings where you can help them reach a goal that they have, right? And and I want to encourage you in your conversations, if things go negative, instead of digging into the negative with them, consider asking what they would like to see happening differently. Right? So if you get into a conversation and they start going, oh, well, my this and my that, and oh, it's a this and it's a that, and you could say, wow, that that sounds really stressful or painful or whatever it is, right? Empathize and ask, what would you like to see happening differently? That's switching that same, I'm talking about a problem, into a positive constructive direction, right? So what would you like to see happening differently? What have you tried along those lines? How did that work for you? How does that make you feel? If I could show you a way to help with this piece, would you be interested in checking that out? I've dealt with that too. And then you go and you show them, right? So the way that this works is, you're having conversations, again, you're having these all the time. At some point, you're going to see that opportunity to serve, right? So what I want you to do is take notes, right? Use your Get Oiling Contact Manager, make a note for yourself. After you have heard this opening, don't pounce on it right away. Empathize, ask more questions, be the present there for them. And then go after you leave that conversation, maybe you gotta go, because you're standing in the grocery store, right? You could ask them if they want to carry this conversation on, uh, you know, privately, have them give you a call, whatever. But from that point, you know, in in the space between the conversation you were just having, and the next time that you speak, gather some links and resources, phone a friend. Your upline, sideline, meet a best friend in the Get Oiling Facebook group, and you guys do this together, cross-team does this all the time. Gather some links and resources, maybe grab a friend who can help you get them faster, because they know more than you do. They do this full-time, et cetera, right? Lean on your team. And then at least twenty-four hours later, because again, you don't want to be a pouncing at this opportunist, because you are a friendly human first and a Young Living brand partner second, right? Or third or fourth, depending on you, right? So come back at least twenty-four hours later with an offer to help. And the language goes similar to what I just said a second ago. Hey, I've been thinking about what we talked about yesterday. If I could show you a way to, right, solve the problem, insert the problem here, right? Would you be interested in checking it out? You know, another thing that you could do, if this is someone who's maybe a little bit closer to you, you could say, hey, you know, that's something that I was dealing with, you know, up till, you know, a month ago. But what happened a month ago is I got introduced to this really cool group, uh, where these people are getting wild results, by making just a simple shift. You want to take a look at it with me? Right? And and then you show them the fourteen-day reset, you get them set up with the product, and you guys do it together. And then critically importantly, the best way for this to work for you is to keep notes in your contact manager, right? So if you are at the bank and you are chatting up your teller, you're getting to know your teller, they will eventually, you know, if you are a friendly person and you are continuing to be a friendly person with them, they may very well eventually share with you a goal or an interest, or something in the conversation might lead to an opportunity to help them. And by helping them, you know, you know a product that could serve them, right? You need to be keeping notes, don't need to keep this stuffed in your head or in your DMs on social media. Put these notes in your contact manager, create a contact for each of these people that you're interacting with, that you are having these conversations with, and give yourself notes, right? Remember, like, write down, they said their their spouse's name, write their spouse's name down. You're someone who cares enough to know their details. And that means a lot to them, right? So you can show up to them better, and they will be obviously that much more interested and maybe doing the fourteen-day reset with you, because now they've got a good friend in you to realize these goals with. All right, now, what I want to encourage you to do, if you have not done this yet, if you are a Get Oiling member at any plan level, right now, get over to the Get Oiling Success Academy, look for online courses and resources, that's the one right there in the middle, and then click the Marketing Mastery Workshop. There is a full-blown course in there, full-blown program, you could take at your own pace, that works you through each of the systems that you want to have in place to grow Young Living, whether you are on a full or part-time basis. And it is this frictionless, open, honest, not influencery, not promoty stuff, right? This is very simple, straightforward brass tacks, stuff that's always worked, strategies. And they're all in there, and if you are a Get Oiling member, you get access to it for free. So if you aren't with Get Oiling yet, give us a shot, we're a dollar for your first month, you get access to this, and you can put this to use in your business. This is something that includes a great deal of resources. So if you, uh, for instance, want to follow the conversation flow that I was just talking about, and you would like to have automations in your system that apply and remove follow-up plans, that remind you of the different things you need to do at each stage, from the point of originating a conversation all the way through to helping someone find their hero product and share Young Living themselves for the first time, it's all in here, all right? So let's get into our discussion, live help, Q and A, whatever you need. Head over into the Q and A if you have questions, and we are here to answer them, to help you with whatever it is that you would like to work on this week. Oh, thank you, Donna. Donna's a fan of the Marketing, um, Marketing Mastery Workshop. Here, let me actually go over here, I'll screen share real quick, just so you guys know exactly how you can find it. If you haven't used the, um, the, uh, Get Oiling Success Academy, that's right under here, under the Start Here menu. Go to Success Academy, online resources and courses, it's this one right here, Marketing Mastery Workshop. It is soup to nuts, really everything that you need to know. We do talk about different levels there. So if you're somebody who's really interested in having a, um, you know, a website, an online presence, et cetera, we talk about that in there, but we talk about what it means to start from what you have right now, right? So there's no thing that's far off in the future, once I have perfection attained, then I can start doing this thing for my business or for myself. So, uh, so definitely get in there and do that if you haven't done it yet. Allison says, my problem is finishing what I've started, you've started all of them. Well, the the good news is, um, you know, for those of you who do have access to all of our courses, the Marketing Mastery Workshop is sort of like the meta, it's like, we we talk about lots of different workshops in there and bring in content from them. So it's really, if you want the, first I do this, and then I do this, if you want the actual order of operations, uh, and you want to have your system set up, uh, that would be the one that I would encourage you to to focus on, because it's it's kind of got everything you need to know in order from everything else. You could certainly do any of the others, uh, you know, and dive into the additional depth that's available there. But if you really want like the brass tacks, like I want to do A, B, C, D, that's that's definitely what I would recommend. Does it list the courses? Where where you are utilizing resources from other courses, it mentions them, and it points you to where you need to go. So in that way, yes, it it's it's basically, it's what you need to know when you need to know it, and not a bunch of extraneous stuff, right? So let's just say, for instance, um, you would like to establish a personal brand to some degree, but like, you're not fully bought into it, and I think that's true for most of us. If you're just getting started as a brand partner, you probably don't even know what it means to be a personal brand, or to, like, why would I have my own website? I'm sharing Young Living, right? If that's you, you don't want to go through the entire Brand My Business workshop yet. You want to go through the Marketing Mastery Workshop, and it's going to mention a couple of things from there if you're ready for it. But if you're not, there's still a path forward, right? So that's that's kind of the difference there, Allison. I know you've you've got access to like a whole library of stuff that we've, uh, that we've created. The Marketing Mastery Workshop is the blueprint, um, that I I think should be kind of like required, required completion, uh, for everybody. It really is the stuff that I I I wish more people were teaching this in this space that we work in, not just Young Living, but network marketing generally. Awesome. So do we have any questions? Does anybody want to look at anything, uh, today? Uh, work through, uh, anything that you're working on, there's opportunity for a website review or two, uh, if you would like. Uh, oh, hey, Anna Connie, uh, thought I sent it for website review, not sure I completed the process, no worries. Welcome, it is, uh, good to have you here. Here, let me bring you out.
Hello.
Hi.
So, I know, I know. And I was like, crap, I woke up early and I'm not even, I don't even think I'm on the schedule. So I am revamping everything, and I'm niching down to that prenatal postpartum baby in me yoga, prenatal yoga. I got a contract with a new parent support on base, and we started a baby in me vault, like, for the people that were coming to the class, so that I could get them into my system, and I took pictures of them during the class as my lead magnet, so in order for them to get the pictures, they had to go into my vault. And it helps because everybody mostly signed up, and then they started diving into like some free resources I gave them, but what I noticed was when they started getting the nurturing campaign, once they signed up for the vault, because I signed myself up as a test, I completely forgot that when I originally set up my stuff, I signed up for the New Prospects campaign, I think it was like the Healthy Living, so the lead magnet that comes with that one is the Five Steps to Healthy Living. And so now both those campaigns are sending out at the same time. And I'm kind of worried because obviously the, I haven't talked to them about oils in general. These are women that are now postpartum, they're, most of them are before their six months. And I don't want to like bombard people in the future as I add them on. So I'm like, I have no idea where this is set up, and I'm almost wondering if there's a different, um, theme that would be maybe even more appropriate. I was like, I can't remember where all that was in the Get Oiling.
Okay, let me show you real quick where that is, and then we can, we can figure out how to remove that campaign from those contacts. So, um, because yeah, you definitely don't want to bombard, especially if it's information that they didn't ask for, or they didn't know that they were going to be receiving from you, uh, you you don't want to breach that trust. So under contact settings, general settings, if you are someone that is operating with a personalized website like you are, I recommend that you do this. So everyone who is on the call here today or watches this in the future, if you are using your website as a personal brand, I recommend that you follow this step, default campaign, right here. It's currently New Prospects, that's that campaign that's sending out. So I'm going to go to no campaign, and then you're going to want to go through and make that modification for these, uh, for these other markets, depending on on where you're operating, right? So just go to just no campaign, um, because you have your own campaigns. So New Prospects is a great campaign to use if you are, let's say, for instance, um, using the Brand My Business Workshop, and you've, you know, used that built-in, um, lead magnet, which this is great for, but you have your own that are like very much geared toward, uh, the mamas. And if they start hearing just generalized stuff from you that's not about like mamas and babies, they're gonna be like, wait, who is this person again? So we'll we'll save that, and then you said they were in a vault, right?
Yes, they're in the Tiny Toes and Mama Zen's vault.
Okay. There we go.
By the way, can I just say how amazing you are? Um, I'm in that CFC challenge, and, um, you know, I've been with Get Oiling for a little bit over a year now, and, um, I've been stalking you and watching, like, been watching all of your YouTube videos. And it really led me to rebranding myself under my name. I mean, I can't give you a hundred percent credit for it, but it was a big help watching a lot of these videos and being part of the Facebook community, and I landed, um, a ten thousand dollar contract with, um, for my baby in me yoga. Um, and then I got that subcontract, so I'm just like, the things are just like so flowing after I really niched down into this postpartum baby in me pregnancy prenatal stuff, and so I just want to thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Jolene, uh, where we just changed all the campaigns to no campaigns, the starting page there, that was Settings, and then General, and then you scroll down. Anna Connie, I wish I could just bottle up like everything that you just shared, and like spread that around to everybody who has any doubt at all of putting themselves out there. Because you are proof that you can do incredible things with some passion and 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 trying. Like, you've done this stuff yourself, like you, all this gorgeous stuff that you've created. This is your hard work, and it's just, it's amazing what you've done here. All right, so here's what we're gonna do, because we don't want to send those messages to the people who didn't ask for them. So here's our ten contacts in this vault. We are going to go over here to, actually, do you know if you, did you apply a tag to them by chance?
When they signed up? They're under tiny.
Let's actually look here real quick.
Because I think they got there from a landing page, so let me look at the landing page. It's the landing page, I I followed your thing, that landing page is Tiny Toes and Mama Zen.
Got you, Tiny Toes. So I'll just type it up, here we go, right here. This is what we used?
Yeah.
Okay, so that means, oh.
That sucks, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, that's okay. Um, oh, and here you go, you see, this this is what happened. You see that? So if you aren't going to include a campaign, make sure you go, well, I mean, you have no campaign as your default campaign now, so you're good.
Okay.
Right? Uh, but if you aren't using a campaign, which, because you're using this to add them to a vault, that makes sense. You can just go ahead and add no campaign here. Uh, so that's why that happened. But this does mean that we need to approach this from the there in a vault perspective, because you didn't tag them when they went into the vault. So we'll just go to the vault here, uh, and then we will, in this ten contacts, we're going to go to Actions, Bolt Contact Actions, and then the campaign, uh, is New Prospects. And we're going to stop sending.
Okay.
Yeah, and then let's get out of there, so we aren't sharing anybody's information, so yeah. So so they shouldn't be getting it now. Um, congratulations, by the way, it's a great idea. If you're doing an in-person event, uh, like if they want to get access to the pictures, they have to join a, join a free group on your website, it's brilliant idea.
Yeah, um, and I don't know if you have time to just go back to like my homepage and just give me a sense of idea if I'm on the right track. So I, you know, I I rewatched the video where you're like, you know, if you're a brick and mortar, your front door, you want to make sure that you don't give them too many options. As you can see, it's very different than the last time you looked. And very more now, it's it's completely niched down so that they know hopefully exactly who I'm serving right off the bat. And then, yeah, just kind of used my own pictures, because that's the journey that I'm selling. I mean, essentially, I'm selling myself and my own experience. So I have essentially really just two pathways. So I'm I'm selling my course, and I had a hard time figuring out how to give them a freebie in case they, you know, to allow them to not just leave without anything. But I still want, my main offer is going to be this, this course that I have already pre-built. I'm actually hosting it on Thinkific, but I'm in the transitioning of putting it into my Get Oiling, I upgraded to the Unlimited Vault so that I could do it. It's just going to take me a little bit of time to gather all my assets and just redo some of it, because I need to rebrand it, because it was under Fat Mermaid. So I was, in all the videos, you hear me say, hey, fat mama mermaids, and so I have to like clip that part so that it removes the Fat Mermaid brand from everything, without having to re-record everything. So I created this as the lead, so that once they sign, I was like, I I have to do it as the pop-up, because otherwise if they just click on a link and I send them to Thinkific, I won't ever really know who goes there, and I don't know how to follow up with them. So I don't know if this was the best way. I was like, not sure.
Here's what I would do. Um, I would remove the button here cuz the, like, basically you, you wanna zoom down to one choice, right? Uh, so we don't want this here and we don't want this here. Um, because what we want to do, we wanna give.
Photos, so it's a markup. I can change that.
Good, good. Oh, awesome. All right, yeah. So, uh, so I, I would modify that. Uh, and, and then basically maybe offer them uh, a sample lesson or something like that, just as a compelling reason to get their information. And then in the email, you would be, you know, sending them off to, uh, to Thinkific from there.
Okay, cuz Thinkific offers them a free preview. There's some lessons in, when they go to the sales page through Thinkific, they can actually preview the course on that sales page. So should I just put instead of begin my journey, you know, see preview, you know, preview course or something to get them to click it so that they can actually go to the sales page or?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but definitely remove any other options for them to click or scan, for sure.
Okay, yeah. And then so in the middle, this is the new lead magnet cuz I, I'm in the CFC challenge and you pointed out very, um, nicely that none of my lead magnets that I've ever created actually go back to my offer. And so I was like, what can I teach? It's a yoga course, like that would be able to, you know, suffice cuz as my homepage, I'm either getting people who are postpartum or they're still pregnant and I teach prenatal yoga, but I also teach baby and me and postpartum yoga. So I created this free guide and it essentially has nine poses for them to do, um, while they're pregnant. And then three of them are specifically for baby and me.
Love it.
And so I hope that this was appropriate. It, it, I feel like it matches what I'm supposed to be doing now. And so that is kind of the same one I use across all of them. And so now they only have, um, I am having a hard time with the work with me and figuring out, should I do services or should I do work with me? Um, I'm trying to limit the pathways and not giving them too many options so that I can direct them. So I'm taking your advice from the last time we talked and creating specific landing pages. So if you go to work with me, you should see, if you just click on that, now it's just this page instead of that work with me that you may remember from before. So now it's like, okay, you're either, you know, pregnant and I give them my guide again. Um, and so I'm not sure. I'm like, I think I'm confusing. Maybe this is too much. They're not gonna really understand. So I still needed a place to have all my brands so that they know, like, you can still come here for Fat Mermaids if you needed to. Um, but if you click on any of the stuff that have to do with pregnancy or postpartum, it takes them to my now new homepage for all my maternity and postpartum stuff. And here is where I kind of talk about what yoga does for people. And then here's the journey. Um, from basically pregnancy to now, so here's the maternity pathway, here's the postpartum pathway. And then just to kind of make sure that, um, and then again, the same guide, um, you know, that I captured them, the course, you know, if they wanna pre- preview. Um, this just takes them back to postpartum. I have that for fertility. And then I do the baby, the essential oils class, um, that I'll be offering again.
This is so good.
And then the testimonial, so.
This is all, it's super logical. Like this, this is really, really good. You're doing a fantastic job. If somebody hears about you, learns about you, sees some things that you said, and they are interested in working with you, you're giving them the full menu. You know, it's, this is, this is fantastic.
Too much? Is, should I do something different?
You offer, you offer a lot and you, and, and because of, of who you're offering to, a, a, a mom-to-be is wildly different at 12 weeks versus, you know, seven months, you know? Uh, and, and so you need to be able to show them where you can support them in different ways if you are offering different things for those different phases. So no, you, it, what you do necessitates that. And I think you've done a really great job here. Really, really great job. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's just kind of, and just, you know, duct tape together for now just so that I can have something as I'm starting to like really get people to know, come to me, asking me for consults and stuff so that I have something in place. I'm still trying to figure out where to place the Young Living stuff cuz obviously I don't wanna lose the opportunity to send people there, but, um, I just organizing.
You got the 14-day reset right here. Hello? This is great. Yeah, you've got the 14-day reset here. And the thing is, your website is not the opportunity to share Young Living. Your website is the opportunity to build trust and to create opportunities for people to connect with you one-on-one where you're able to share Young Living. Or if you're, you know, doing a course or a program and like contextually, it makes sense to share a Young Living product in, in the course of that.
Awesome.
You're, you've done such great work. This is really, really good.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that was the biggest thing cuz I was like, oh man. So they don't have to get any more emails and I can explain to them. And plus, I'm adding new students every week cuz I'm booked out for a few weeks. And so I was like, before I keep adding people to the vault, let me fix this first.
That is so cool.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Look forward to hearing more about this journey for you. Thanks for coming out. Man, it is so awesome to see a journey like that. Oh my gosh, that is so cool. Um, and, and just what's coming of it. That is amazing. All right, Cheryl asked, how would you approach a neighbor you just met and find, and found out that she cleans houses? I'd like to approach introducing her to thieves for an all-natural, all-in-one cleaner for her business and her clients. So, um, I wouldn't necessarily just jump right in. Uh, I would kinda take the temperature of your interaction with this neighbor. Is this neighbor someone that you could really see yourself socially connecting with, being a friend of? If that's the case, then invite her for coffee, tea, whatever, uh, and, um, and learn more about what she does. What, why did she get into what she does? What does she love about it? What does she hate about it? Let her tell you that the chemicals bother her. Right? Um, let her tell you that, you know, that, that it's, it's kind of frustrating to have to use other people's products. Otherwise I'd have to carry around 27 different products of my own. Right? So if this is someone that you have, uh, you know, a vibe with, if you have a connection with, that you could see being a, a very friendly one, a friendship, uh, then I would, I would start by asking more questions and starting a conversation as a friend, right? Becoming better friends, um, because that's going to give you a much more meaningful connection. Um, it's, it's also your neighbor. But if it is someone, if you're not really getting that vibe, um, then you could simply just make mention, say, hey, I noticed that you have a cleaning business. I'm curious, uh, what kind of products do you use? You know, do, do you use your own products? Right? Or do you, do you have to use clients' products? So start a conversation like that. You could go straight in, like to the point if you don't feel like there's enough there for you to like build a friendship. But if you are wanting to build a friendship, I would go with the first recommendation, hands down. Especially cuz it's your neighbor. Um, all right, so where she just changed all campaigns to no campaigns, the starting page, like I mentioned, that is, um, under settings, uh, contact settings and then general. And then you're gonna look down to default campaign. And that's where you can make those changes. Uh, Sheila, the challenge that Anikaani is talking about is actually one, uh, it's a course on our Attract Well platform. So, uh, and matter of fact, I think if you go to attractwell.com/cfC, Charlie, Foxhole Charlie, uh, then you'll be able to get access to the, um, uh, to the, to the client funnel challenge. Essentially what that is, is if you are a coach or some type of a practitioner, consultant, someone who is selling, uh, your expertise or services and in order for someone to be able to work with you, you need to first have a qualifying conversation with them to see if, if you're fit for each other. I talk through exactly how you would set up a funnel to generate leads and move them toward that point of conversion inside of that course. So that is the one that Anikaani mentioned. All right, Tina says, curious how hard it is to change up my branding from oils of encouragement to just my name on my website. Uh, it's not super hard. Um, essentially you're going to need to, you know, get a domain that is your name and, uh, get in touch with our awesome team here who can help you, uh, get that connected to your Get Oilin' site. And then you do wanna make sure before you go and make that change, uh, that you are prepared. Because when you change your domain name, uh, you are going to be changing some of the internal links that are found throughout your website. So that is a little bit of work. Uh, but one of the things that you could do ahead of time, uh, is anywhere you have your current website name in a URL, you can go in and just put in brackets, my underscore website. And that is gonna show whatever your website is, no matter how many times you change it. So in the URL field, anywhere you're sharing a URL, whether that's a button, a link in an email, something on a page, if you put my underscore website inside of brackets slash, everything else stays the same, then you will have a smooth transition and won't have as many broken links. But I definitely recommend at minimum that you create a 404 page for your account before you, um, before you change your domain. If you have an existing custom website. Uh, so Jolene, no, I, I don't think that overall you shouldn't use the default campaign. I think that you should use the default campaign if you are a Get Oilin' user who does not have a custom website, number one. So if you're using our built-in themes, 100 million percent use that built-in campaign. If you are, uh, using that, um, that new prospects built-in campaign, I do recommend that you use it intentionally. Right? So what that means is, uh, is that, um, if you are going to use it, you are putting it in the context of a funnel. Uh, and so inside actually of that new prospects campaign, it offers a five steps to natural living guide. Now, you can offer that five steps to natural living guide from your custom website if you want to. It's basically a funnel that's done for you. You just need to have the front page for it. Uh, and we actually have full templates for that in the Brand My Business Workshop, uh, which you can find. Um, let me come back over here real quick. If you go to the Success Academy online courses and resources, this, um, Brand My Business Workshop. If you get access to this, uh, you have all of the pages you need to build out your very first website and they all include the use of a, a pop-up form, right? Where people can put in their email and phone and, you know, name, et cetera, uh, to get five steps to natural living from you. And you don't have to worry about writing an email campaign because the new prospects campaign is already attached to it. The reason why I recommend that you, if you have a custom website, that you don't have the new prospects campaign as your default anywhere, uh, is because you probably are establishing a brand, uh, with, uh, other communicated means of, um, of, of establishing contact with you. And that campaign is incongruous, uh, with anything other than get my guide, right? Get this secret. All of those things that those built-in landing page themes are set up to offer work beautifully with, with that new prospects campaign. Um, but that's if you're using our built-in resources, right? So if you are at seed or starter, don't change that. It's exactly what you need. Uh, if you're at basic and you're using our built-in themes, or really at any plan level, you're using our built-in themes, use it. Um, cuz it's good, it's written well and, uh, and it, you know, introduces them to Young Living in a really nice way uh, and encourages them to connect with you and all kinds of great stuff. So, yeah, definitely not saying don't use it, period, but be clear of what it is, um, especially if you are, uh, you know, someone who has your own, your own personal website. Let's see, so much of sharing boils down to having patience, doesn't it? Yes. Sometimes I feel impatient and want everything to happen now. AJ, yes. Yes, it is patience. Um, and so there is a, there's a Buddhist practice that we could all learn a little bit from, of detachment. Uh, and I think anybody who is super good at sales, uh, no matter what your, your spiritual path or religious background is, uh, we all understand that, um, that going into a conversation, uh, we need to be open-minded about what the outcome could be. We could see someone and say, oh my gosh, they could really use this thing that I know about. And, and that could serve them so well. And if we went in and, and our, our ideal outcome in that conversation is they're gonna say yes and, and they're gonna buy $300 worth of product and da, 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 da. We have that, like what's in it for me on top of our mind. And it's standing in the way of us being able to be fully present with that other person. And it's, oh, that makes it an ulterior motive, right? You, even though you're selling something, have the ability to walk through life and have great conversations and make a lot of money in sales without actually operating with an ulterior motive. Right? So to, to take this back to the language of my mentors, some will, some won't, so what? I just gotta go have a lot of conversations with interesting people, right? So you do have to understand that, um, that, that patience, uh, is important here. Uh, the better you are at asking great questions, uh, and making sure that you are on top of your follow-up and you've got those little details like spouse names and stuff, not memorized, but in your system for reference, uh, then you're gonna be more effective and you won't have to be as patient because people will convert faster. But that's a skill that you develop over time. So yeah, okay. Hope that that was helpful to you guys. I hope you guys are encouraged and excited to go out and, uh, and share more. Um, I hope after seeing Anikaani's hard work, that you, uh, maybe get excited about branding yourself and offering incredible things. Uh, cuz man, that was so cool to see. Hope she's getting some sleep now. She's in Japan. It's very late there, uh, early. Awesome. Okay, so I thank you guys again for being here. Uh, happy leap day, by the way. We've never done this before. Uh, and we will see you back here, uh, same time next week. Um, oh, sorry, one more question. Allison, sorry, I almost missed this. Seen, uh, I've seen some have testimonies on their homepage. If I were to ask for testimonies, how do you do that? Uh, so that starts with care calls, right? That means you're having conversations with the people that you are working with. And you are tracking what it is their goal is, right? So that you even know that a change has happened. So if you're fishing for, you know, what I, you know, can I get a, a testimonial from you? That's gonna be a lot more challenging uh, than basically saying, you know, hey, I know this thing happened for you. Tell me how that feels, right? What was it like before and what's it like now, et cetera? Um, how many sentences, et cetera? That, so the copy that you provide for a testimonial is going to vary really widely. If I was, if I was selling something on a page for, you know, thousands of dollars, I would have much more lengthy testimonials than if I was offering the 14-day reset, right? So you'll notice if you actually go to the 14-day reset, um, sharing page that you guys have access to for free. If you don't have it yet, definitely look up 14-day reset on our YouTube channel or in the Success Academy. Uh, but you know, those are, those are brief. So I would just look at the ones that you like and just start making your own. There, there's not one right way to do it. I would just start doing it. Awesome. Thank you guys so much for being here. Look forward to seeing you all next week. And, uh, yeah, have a great week, everybody. Take care.